My name is Sarah Linus Robinson. I'm the Director of Projects with the Lindell Neighborhood Association, but as a part of a team of eight neighborhoods. So I want to thank the eight leaders from those neighborhoods also for their volunteering tonight. This is organized by the WED, La Nielle East, Armicich, Linden Mills, Kenny, East Carrier, Invers, Kingfield, and Lindell Neighborhood Association.
Yay!
If you heard your neighborhood call in that, thank you for being part of an organization that understands that getting out of the vote and being involved in local politics is very important to people feeling engaged and empowered in what often feels like a helpless rolling system that we're a part of. If you didn't hear your neighborhood association call in that, do not be angry with them. Neighborhoods are working on very limited budgets. They might have felt that they didn't have the volunteer financial resources to be a part of this, and you can help them by offering to set up a workforce, a working team for get out of the vote initiatives, or by even serving on their board of directors. I want to thank Maraki. Am I saying it right? Yay! For hosting this, they donate this space to us for this forum. Maraki, to be clear. That it just means doing what you do with passion, creativity, and love. So thank you for the space. It's gonna be great. Moving on tonight, I want to welcome Tane Danger as our host and MC for the evening. Tane's a Kingfield resident, a local improv artist, MC and facilitator, and the co-founder of Danger Vote Company and Theater Public Policy. I'm super happy he's here with us tonight. He has a great talent at putting people at ease. He's super smart and he teaches well. And he deeply cares about local politics as well. I'm cheering the night over to Tane to introduce our two candidates. Thank you both for being here. You will lead the conversation for the rest of the night. And that's just the ground rules for all of us to participate in.
Yeah, big round of applause! Hi, everyone. But it's really exciting to be here. I mean, obviously, a big thank you to Sarah and all of the Neighborhood Association organizations and leaders. This wouldn't be happening. And I'm just saying, like, as a moment of pride, like, this kind of a thing doesn't happen everywhere like this, right? Like, so just be proud of being part of this community. Thank you all for coming out, making time for this. Thank you to, we have a wonderful, we have a livestream audience watching myself in this. So thank you to the folks who are tuning in that way. And that should be one of my early, like, thank yous or notes here is that we are livestreaming tonight, but the entire recording of this program will also be available to watch later. So if you have something, if you were busy tonight or couldn't see it, they'll be able to go to the Lindell Neighborhood Association YouTube page and watch the entire recording of tonight's program. So, uh, thank you. I think of all the shots, uh, thank you so much for helping make this whole thing possible with the livestream. Uh, I also wanted to say we are, uh, as I said, we're, uh, I think, and I looked at the table. So I was about to say that we're handing out note cards for people to write questions and submit them, but I looked and it seemed like every single person had already submitted at least three questions, which is great. There's a lot of interest and a lot of good questions coming out. If you have other questions that you want to ask, uh, we have volunteers. Kate's right there, um, and they will walk around like with this note card and a pencil, and if you goes up, I know, I know a lot of people who already filled out their questions. But I feel just even with a hint from having moderated things for a lot of times, it's the person who has to like sit up here and read them. If you make it legible and brief, like, it's much more likely that I actually get a chance to read. If you start with like, "I was born in a farm." Like, I don't usually have time to get to all of that. So, um, that's, that's a little bit. Um, okay, so how are we gonna do today? Uh, I have a handful of questions. We're gonna, we're gonna give each of our candidates a chance to introduce themselves, and then I have some questions. We're gonna leave in the audience questions throughout this thing. A really important note I'm gonna just ask us all to do is like, both of these candidates are gonna say all kinds of things that are gonna make us want to applaud and cheer and get up on our feet. There may be something like that you hear at some point where you have some other reaction to that. I'm gonna just ask, uh, other than at the very beginning here where I introduced both of them, if we can just pull all of our claws, all of our verbal and/or hand motion gestures toward the very end of the program, because we do have a lot that we want to get through. So we're gonna try and just hold that together in order to be kind. I think this was said, but just one more time, if you do need the restrooms, uh, they are out. This is here, and then you can go this way. There is a gender neutral restroom, as I'm told, like, right around the corner. And then there are gendered restrooms, uh, you can have them full, uh, downstairs. Okay. Are you all ready for a District Six School Board Candidate Bull Run? And he goes, oh, God, and one last, I'm gonna say, uh, thank you. We might have already done this, but, uh, our, our media partner really did help us do a lot of the Southwest voices, so a big thank you to Southwest Voices. So, uh, I present, my name is Tane Danger. I'm very excited to be your host and moderator. My goal is to try and get as much information and thought-provoking material from our two candidates and partners to help you all make as informed a decision in as upcoming elections possible. We do have Sasha, who is our fabulous volunteer timekeeper up here. So hopefully we'll be able to just all keep on time as necessary. I would jump in and sort of say like, okay, that's time. But I'm gonna leave time for us to do follow-ups and rebuttals and more things like that. So with that, we should meet our two candidates. So I will just say each of their names, but then we're gonna give each of them 90 seconds here at the top to introduce themselves, say a little bit about why they're running and who they are. So, uh, we have Greta Callahan and Laura Bergman. So big round of applause for both of you for being here. And I would like to say, first, Laura, if you are willing to just jump in and get us started with your opening statement.
Sure thing. Is that on?
It is. You might want to pull it a little bit.
All right. Well, I echo what Tane said. Thank you to the organizing neighborhoods and volunteers that helped pull this together. Thank you, Tane, and thank you for everyone for being here and online. I'm Laura Bergman, and I am honored to be here. Campaigning for this seat for the past nine months has been an absolute joy. I'm an MPS alum, and my sense of community service and civic-mindedness was fostered right here in District Six. I'm also an MPS parent, and my first time being a parent advocate was making sure that my two queer kids were safe and supported at their school. And I also have experience in governance and advocacy and ed policy from the PTA to nonprofit boards to the Minnesota Department of Human Services. But I'm most at home in a Montessori classroom, teaching three- to six-year-olds as an early childhood educator. I'm running for school board because I see this moment in MPS for what it is. This is a moment for listening and repair, for truth and hard conversations, and for hope and for joy. And we need courageous leaders that are willing to move us in that direction. So I want you to check in with yourselves tonight and really think about these few questions that I have for you, because how we lead is just as important as what we say. So when you go home tonight, ask yourself, is this someone who will listen to me, who I can trust, who inspires hope and collaboration? Because this moment requires all of us to do our part to make sure that we are getting the best schools that we can. No person has all of the answers, and I'm really here to bring us together, to be honest and transparent, and to always, always center kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tane, Greta Callahan.
Okay.
But you probably want to pull that up.
From somebody home. Oh, okay. Does that work?
Yeah, you're great.
Okay. How many of you here are truly undecided? How many of you are here truly undecided, not leaning in one direction or the other? Okay, like, five people. How many of you care about public schools and our children? That's the common ground I want to stay centered in tonight and as this race moves forward. I'm Greta Callahan. I was born and raised right here in District Six. I grew up attending Minneapolis Public Schools. My son just graduated from Southwest High School. I began teaching kindergarten in 2011, and I was most recently the ambassador between the ground floor and the top of this district as president of the Minneapolis Federation of Teachers. And I'm running for many reasons. Number one, when we have a thriving public school system again, we will watch poverty go down, crime go down. We will watch the economy go up, where families can read to their kids at night and work one job. We will watch the world become a better place. And next, I've been fighting really hard from the ground floor for a super long time, desperately trying to make our schools better, and I need those at the top fighting just as hard as all of us have been fighting. And last, the Minneapolis Public Schools is in a crisis. We're in a fiscal crisis, an enrollment crisis, a class size crisis. When you're in a crisis, you don't just want someone who can hit the ground running. You need someone who has a running head start. And with my governance, my leadership experience, my experience teaching in the Minneapolis Public Schools, I am ready and excited to take this on. I invite you to join me in this optimistic vision, and I'm really excited for this conversation tonight. Thank you for having me.
Thank you both so much. Okay, and this is one last time, my applause. All right, so, uh, we, you both got to some of this a little bit in your introduction, but, uh, this was a question that came in before we got started. I would like, uh, if you could discuss your experiences with the school district, both professionally and personally, and what uniquely qualified you in this moment to serve on this board? And Greta, I'll start with you.
Okay. Um, well, I started my career in the Minneapolis Public Schools as a kindergartner at La Nielle in my Spud Lacks class. I received a fantastic education, and when I became a teacher, I actually didn't start my career in the Minneapolis Public Schools. I started my career in a charter school, and it was one of the really bad ones. Let's stop here about on the news. And once I made it to the public school system, because it wasn't easy to get back in, or get in back then, because we had a lot of teachers, um, I realized how brilliant our children are. I was so excited to be a part of it, and I saw every day how we were cutting and cutting. I saw us lose our librarian. I saw us take away programming, like, the arts and music that our students deserve. And I started getting really frustrated. I watched what poverty was doing to our classrooms. I watched how we would easily sweep things under the rug and oversimplify complex problems. And as president of our union, I have had the best, most uniquely qualified experience of all, because I do know the ins and outs of this district. I do know what it's like to be in every single one of our buildings, and I am thrilled to now move into this role with all of the experience and qualifications and knowledge that I do have.
Thank you very much for that. Laura, same question just for the audience. So we're asking, your experience personally, professionally with the school district, and what about your experience uniquely qualified you to be on this board at this time?
Yeah, as I mentioned, I'm an MPS parent, and I have skin in the game. I have a third and a fifth grader. We're gonna be part of this district, and they're gonna graduate from MPS just like I did. And as an alum, this is my way to pay it back and pay it forward. As an educator, I'm not okay knowing what is happening in some of our buildings right now, what the realities that our students and educators are enduring in this district. And it's not, it's not enough for us to tell them to just wait until we figure it out. That time is now, and it is this moment. And so what we need in this moment are healers and bridge builders. Our district has been through a lot. As, as a parent, I've watched as we've had online school and a teacher's strike and COVID disruptions. And we really need us to come together to solve the problems together as we, as we move forward. I also would say that some experience that I bring is my, my fresh perspective and my commitment to kids. I am beholden to no one except doing right by our kids, and I will make decisions based on, um, listening to diverse stakeholder voices and looking at how we can improve our student outcomes.
Okay, thank you so much for that. So, since, you know, you both kind of have started to talk about this. And see, I mean, the big thing here is the budget, right? Like, this is, uh, the theme that the school board, more than anything else, like, that direct kind of oversight and, uh, handed. And so the, the question to each of you is, so, uh, we actually wrote it this way. The budget's very complicated, um, and a primary responsibility of the board. So can you tell us specifically what is not working in the current budget, and what specific changes you would advocate for that are different in the next one? I'm gonna like underline specific as many times as I can. And I would just say, this is one where I'm guessing that we'll, we'll start with a minute each, but I'm guessing we'll, we'll dig in more with that. But Laura, maybe we'll start with you. If you can be, uh, as specific as possible about what's not working in the current budget and what specific changes you want to see in the next one.
Well, here's what I know for sure. We need bold and innovative solutions to address the sustainability of our budget, not wishful thinking. As a board, we need to be honest and transparent about how we got here so that we can rebuild trust with our community and bring diverse voices to the table to come up with those solutions together. Specifically, when we look at our budget, we need to reduce expenses. We have seen inflation go up. We have seen our enrollment go down, so we just aren't getting enough revenue into our buildings. We also need to address the enrollment at each building, right? So we have many buildings in, in this district that are having to combine classrooms. They've got ballooning class sizes and four or five splits, or fourth and fifth graders together. They're cutting arts teachers. They're cutting advanced coursework, and that's because we don't have enough enrollment in a building to pay for all of those robust programs families are looking for. And finally, we have to be advocating at the Capitol. I intend to lead now on what I will do as, when I'm elected, and we have to come together and build a coalition of folks that are advocating at the Capitol, because that's where the root of the problem really lies.
Okay, Greta?
Okay. So first of all, we should all be rioting on the streets right now, because we have mandates in education from the federal and state government that are not funded. These are dollars that then get siphoned out of our general fund, and it's something that we, I think, all agree on is not okay. And we need to see not only school boards making a big deal out of this, but unions at all levels. Over the last handful of years, we have watched the reserves grow and grow in the Minneapolis Public Schools on the backs of our children taking less and less. Enrollment has been declining, and there has been zero plan to get our students back. The 42% of son of kids who are not choosing the Minneapolis Public Schools, there is no plan to try to entice them or to retain the families we have. And so increasing enrollment by doing things that parents want, that families want, that students need, is one of the best ways to stabilize and generate more revenue. I could talk about things I disagree with that's happening in the budget all day long, but I'm seeing the red card, so.
So I'm gonna come back, I mean, just to, and I'm gonna give each another minute here, because, and there's things that I want to come back to on enrollment, on, on the Capitol, but I'm gonna just, it, it seems to me that whichever one of you is elected is going to walk into a board where you are going to have a big gap in how many dollars there are versus how many can happen. And so some of these things about increasing enrollment are good. I think everybody would agree that that's a goal, trying to get more dollars from the Capitol. And in the first year, two years, potentially several years, it's going to be a different conversation than that. So what in those first years are you looking at as potential cuts that you would be comfortable making in order to like make this budget work? Greta, I'll come back to you.
I'll tell you what we can do, and it's not keep cutting closest to the kids. Increasing class sizes, cutting programs like fifth grade band and orchestra, cutting our librarians and nurses is dangerous for our students, and it's dangerous for enrollment and generating revenue. When I think about things we can cut, I looked at the agenda from the August 6th School Board meeting, and I encourage all of you to always just look at the consent agenda, because this is where they're passing numerous outside contracts, and a lot of them are great and things that we need. But just this month, we just passed over $4 million for outside, non-Miniapolis Public Schools nurses and social workers to come in. Instead of paying employees who will know our kids and be consistent in our schools who are committed to MPS, we are outsourcing it. We are privatizing it. We just passed $2 million for tutoring services in private schools, because do you know that we have to support much of our students who are still choosing private schools? These are things that we can change, and I'm really excited to be a part of that. But again, at the end of the day, none of this is, like, we cannot create the sustaining change we need without more change from funding these mandates at the government level.
So, uh, two things I just, I want to try and pin down. Are you saying, when you say we can't cut from things people do, like, what is that line? And what would you absolutely not cut back?
Do not cut from the classroom.
Ever?
At, at all costs. That should be our number one priority, because all that has done is put us in the position we are now. It is a vicious cycle where people leave, they drop enrollment, and then here we are, the dismantling of the public schools going, well, we're gonna have to keep cutting again. At what point are we gonna get the political will to do the things that families are asking for and need?
Are there enough, thank you all, but, uh, are there enough dollars in some of the external contract to make up the gap that we have?
What a great question. Do you know that our union has done requests for information years in a row, and we have not received that information on all of those outside contracts, which is why I encourage all of you to look at the consent agenda every single month, because half the stuff in there doesn't make sense, and it might be great for kids, but we need to look at that with a microscope, um, together with our school board, with everyone who cares about our district finances, to know where every single dollar is going and how it can be spent best and closest to our kids.
Okay, I'm gonna come over there, Laura. Again, pushing for specifics, knowing that there will be things almost certainly that have to be cut, where, where do you look to?
Yeah, well, first I want to say I agree with a couple of things that Greta said here. First of all, that we do need some transparency with our community about how we got here. We need to educate the public about the defunding from the state, but also the fact that our enrollment is declining. My, my opponent mentioned that, you know, we have been kind of adding to our reserves. Those reserves are gone. We used $55 million to plug a hole in a $110 million deficit. We don't have that for next year's budget. So you're right. What are we gonna do? What are we going to cut? I do think that we can use enrollment strategies as a way to bring in more revenue. And first, that means we need to understand why families are leaving this district. Forty-two percent of eligible kids in MPS are enrolling elsewhere. And I know that my opponent chose to send her son to Edina till eighth grade, and so we need to ask parents like her why they left and what it would take to bring them back. I also think we need an evidence-based literacy curriculum, because so many of our families have been leaving because we are not teaching our kids how to read. And finally, we do need to approve fiscally responsible budgets that support schools so they have the robust programming that families are looking for. Smaller class sizes, advanced coursework, access to arts and languages. They are leaving for other schools that have more kids in a building that can support those programs.
I'm so happy to, and we're gonna, I promise, after we get through this part, we're gonna come to enrollment pieces, but I gotta try one more time, like, just on like, where, I mean, because everybody here is like, this is, you want this job, and like, this job is going to be cutting stuff. So what is some of those cut? What are some of those cuts?
Listen, I've been saying this for months now. We can't be more concerned with saving buildings as we are as what's happening inside those buildings. What we have right now is not a thriving system. Ask any parent, ask any educator this year, and they will tell you that it is, it is unsustainable. The only way that we are going to be able to have enough support in a building for both students and educators is to consolidate some buildings, make sure that we have enrollment in a building that can support that. And I think that the community is ready for these honest and transparent conversations. I don't want to close schools, but the reality is, we haven't had boards that have made those responsible decisions, been transparent and honest, have the political will to have that conversation with the community. Our community is ready, and we need to be meeting them where they're at and asking their questions. What is it that your child needs to be successful in school? What kind of programs do you want? We can make investments in early childhood. We can make investments in more dual-language programming. Just listen to our community if we are going about the school transformation, and the board determines that closures or consolidations needs to be part of that.
Greta, I'm gonna give you a chance to respond to this. Would you, are you open to potentially closing buildings in order to close what will be almost certainly at least a $50 million gap next year if not this year?
I approach school closures with a very pragmatic lens. Before anyone is saying the words "close schools," as a leader who knows what those words mean, I know that we have to ask three questions. Number one, how much money would we save in closing a particular school? Because we save money by getting rid of people, not buildings. Number two, how many of those students do we believe we will retain if we close that school? And how did we come up with that number? And last, how many students have to enroll in that building to keep it open? And why aren't we hyper-focused on the landlord? I have been through school closures in this district. In 2007, we closed six schools on the north side. We closed a school in northeast, and I heard the same terms people are using now, right-sizing this district. We just had to rip off the Band-Aid, and guess what? It only led us to more school closures. We cannot continue to shrink our public schools. I'm here today because I want to save the Minneapolis Public Schools. We need a private public school system that will make our city the place that all of our children and its citizens deserve.
Just to follow up though, that doesn't directly answer my question. Are you open to potentially closing schools or not?
I am open to answering those three questions before I ever utter the word "close schools," because that is driving enrollment down just the top of school closures and leaders saying those words.
And do you believe that there is enough money elsewhere in the budget without potential building closures?
I believe, like I said, that we need to look at outside contracts, that we need to get more money from the state legislative level, and that we need to be, instead of having that discussion with that lens, which is from a deficit mindset, we need to be doing everything we can to get a plan to retain our families and get more families back.
Laura, what would you tend to respond?
I've had a very different experience in my nine months of campaigning as I've talked to families in this district. Families that are leaving are leaving because they don't see the leaders in this district making the hard decisions. They don't trust the way that we've been making our budget decisions year after year without addressing this looming financial gap. We are, we are in this budget crisis because we have not had funding from the state, because of inflation, and because of a loss of enrollment. Now, again, I understand that there's a myriad of reasons that families choose to enroll elsewhere for their families. Just like I mentioned, my opponent chose to send her kid to Edina for eight years. Why? Tell us why. And if it's something that our district can be doing better, then we need to address that. If we are not meeting our kids' needs and families are leaving because of that, because they don't see the courageous leadership making the hard decisions and bringing the community into the conversations, that is what is eroding the trust in this dist, in this district and our leaders, and we need to change that. We need a different way of doing business in MPS.
Tane, because that's the second time my child and my decision has been brought up without mentioning that you sent your child to a private school. I would like to address that. I was given a poor, same mom who was on welfare. I was literally receiving housing assistance, food assistance. I had no one at that time when I had my child. And by the time he was in kindergarten, after I had done student teaching in Edina, because it was near my wonderful parents who stepped up for me, and I got a job simultaneously in North Minneapolis, I needed them to take him to and from school. They were my rock, and that was closest and easiest for them. It was a choice I had to make, not because I didn't love Minneapolis Public Schools, but because I was a struggling, single mom who was poor. And by the time I even made it to Minneapolis Public Schools, and it made sense for me and him and our life, because Dad, who had no custody, like, it's legal custody, and what that means is you can pretty much still make any decision, would not let us change schools, because he wanted stability for my son, and that's okay. But it wasn't until he chose to move to Texas that I got to put more of us back into Minneapolis Public Schools. And I stand by all those decisions and every single parent who is doing what is best for their child now without making assumptions about what that means.
I have to say, if we all can like hold our applause again, as we're going to say.
Don't comment, kids.
So. And I'm gonna ask people, unless you're gonna shout at me personally, not to shout at the people on the stage, if that's all right. So I'm gonna give Laura a chance to respond to, because her personal situation was also brought up. So I'm gonna give you a chance to respond to that. And then I'm gonna brought us back out to a policy discussion.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't need an explanation. I'm just illustrating that families make their decisions about where to send their kids for a variety of reasons. kids for a variety of reasons. It's not just because of decisions that the district is making. They have personal circumstances. And you know what? You're right. I sent my kids to a preschool where I had to pay tuition. So who here hasn't had to pay for childcare? Because we entered this district after the CDD, when our Montessori magnet became a community school. We actively chose MPS because of its promise, because we believed in it, because I am an MPS alum and I am proud to be so. Who here hasn't paid for childcare? By my opponent's definition, then you sent your kid to a private school.
So, I want to bring this out to, like, where's this? What did I just say about mood warning? So, I wanna bring this out to, I want, what?
That's a reply to the other two.
Well, alright, listen, everybody, this is, we're, we're here talking about kids, so just try to imagine that we're trying to model for children how we would want them to, uh, be in a space. So, I'm gonna bring this back to, you both brought up, uh, different reasons, uh, people might go elsewhere other than Minneapolis Public Schools. And some of those are personal, but we also know that this is happening on a macro level. And you both brought up that like drawing more people into the Minneapolis Public School system would be a key thing that we have to do, and you're trying to do that at a time when you're facing a giant gap in a budget. So, talk to me about how you would do this. And, you know, bonus points if you can reconcile that with the fact that we are, we're doing this in a time of scarcer resources than we probably would like. Greta, I'll start with you.
The first thing Minneapolis Public Schools has to do is stabilize. I keep watching initiative after initiative after initiative after shiny new object, and we need to stabilize. We need to retain our families. And the widely, deeply felt issues that our families are sharing with me, I was just at Kenny the other day at our, and his mom said, "Class cycles matter." I'm hearing that on the doors. We need our kids to have individualized attention. They want programming that is guaranteed. And, and when we say guaranteed, we mean predictable. So, why does Kenny have the great orchestra? Anthony does not, but then you do it Southwest. If we had predictable programming, there would be that natural flow. And when we talk about specific examples of things we could do, like, we don't have a ton of money, right? And we do have larger class sizes. I have been saying this for years. We, as of last year, 10% of our licensed teachers in the Minneapolis Public Schools who we already employ are adults working with adults. I did some back-of-the-mat napkin math with the previous HR director, and if we put all of those people into classrooms, we could have a 12 to 1 ratio for our students without increasing any cost at all. This is in the contract, it's legal. These are things we can start thinking about and co-creating with our families and educators to make sure that our students are served as best they can within the budget we have right now.
Thank you very much, Laura. Same question, uh, strategies and specifics you would do in terms of attracting new people to the school district or people back to schools?
Yeah, I agree that we need to stabilize what's happening in this district. And I think where we differ is what that means, because we may have a balanced budget in this district, but we do not have a thriving system. We do not have enough money in an individual building to provide the robust programming that families are looking for, that they're, you know, leaving our district for, to go to districts like Edina or St. Louis Park. Um, so strategies, I'm, I've been running on a platform that includes more investment in early childhood since the beginning because that's my expertise. I have that expertise in the classroom, I have that expertise as an advocate, and I have that expertise at the Capitol in watching how policies are turned into practices for the people with boots on the ground. Early childhood is a smart investment for kids, but it's also a great enrollment strategy. Um, I also think we must address our literacy curriculum. We are losing too many families, particularly families from the north side, because we are not meeting our kids' needs, we're not teaching them how to read. Fifty percent of kids in Minneapolis don't read at grade level. Seventy-five percent of kids of color aren't reading at grade level. That's not okay. We have to address that. And then those numbers and those skills, those parents will see for themselves that Minneapolis is doing what they're sending their kids there to learn and do.
Thank you, and I, I'm gonna come to some of the, the gap differences in terms of achievement. Uh, soon, I, I, I wanted to go a little bit more with this topic though for another beat we had, and I'll come back to Greta. Um, that effort of trying to actually figure out, like, why folks are leaving? And, uh, my understanding, watching the folks who cover this and do this, is that we don't really do like a particularly good job trying to understand that after that. So, I guess the question is, if you were on the board, is there more, would there be something that you would particularly push for in terms of trying to, uh, do a survey, outreach, understand like why people are leaving? Or is that like, uh, not worth it in sort of the bigger picture?
All I think of is Stevie Wonder's song, "If you really want to hear, you haven't said nothing," because our families have been crystal clear with us. They want stability. They don't want their pathways pulled up from underneath them. They moved to these neighborhoods, these beautiful neighborhood schools are the reason why people come here. The comprehensive district design, the CDD was a plan that decimated enrollment. It was something that was wildly unpopular. It was something that the people who have surrounded my opponent's campaign fought against us for, and it led to a declining enrollment. They covered most of our K8s, they centralized magnets, they did this all in a pandemic, overnight, moved thousands of kids into different buildings and families, especially over here in Southwest, said, "I'm gonna choose something else for my kid because I can." And at the time, they were gassed with by district leaders, gassed up by volunteers in my opponent's campaign, weaponizing the word equity, when all it did was lead to a more inequitable system and inadequate schools.
Laura, you give you a chance to respond.
I'm really glad that Greta brought up the CDD because I think it's unanimous that the CDD did not have the intended impact. And in fact, um, we did see that as an erosion of trust in a lot of our communities because we moved a lot of kids around and we told a lot of parents that their concerns were unfounded. That's not a way to build community. Um, I also think that the other problem with the CDD is that we didn't address our financial realities. Yes, it was during a pandemic and it was terrible timing, but part of the reason was because of the goals of the CDD, which was increased equity and an integration plan. Those, that has not been successful, that has not had the, the proven impact that would have stabilized our district, especially for our Black and Brown students that continue to be underserved in our schools. My opponent mentioned that we lost enrollment because of the CDD. We were losing enrollment long before the CDD from families on the north side because we weren't meeting the needs of their kids. We have to address this. Student outcomes mean a lot, especially when families are trying to do everything they can to get out of poverty. And here in District Six, I've heard so many parents say that they've actually had an okay experience after the CDD, but what happened was an erosion of trust. And so any future decisions that will impact enrollment have to be made with community's impact in mind.
Okay, uh, Greta, I'll give you another chance to answer that.
Sure, well, when we think about what's happened on our north side, it's an influx of charter schools, an influx of weaponizing the word "choice" to poor Black mothers, an influx of cutting, cutting, but I see a lot of Bethune people here, received some of the biggest cuts in our district this past year. We lost six schools in 2007, which has led to further cuts. And as someone who spent her entire career teaching on the north side, I can tell you that at no point was the district saying, "Hey, families, how can we retain you? How can we make sure that you keep choosing this school system?" At no point in time were they utilizing our educators to do some of that outreach, which I think is one of the best things our district could be utilizing. Over 70% of our families love their teachers. This is an untapped resource in this district that we need to use to strengthen our school systems. And one of the best ways to increase enrollment, when you have a school like Bethune, right by a charter school, is put more investment into that building and be competitive with that charter school because they are being competitive with us.
There's so many things, uh, I'm gonna just go with the, the piece about the, that outreach, which we, we have some questions about, we've been talking about, uh, potentially teachers, what does that look like? Is that a, is that a new task? Is that a new job role? Like, what, what is that in terms of an action, a thing from the board that you can make happen?
I'll tell you, as a charter school teacher, um, we were paid extra to go after school, go to parks, talk to families, talk about the great things we're doing.
So is that a thing Minneapolis Public Schools should pay teachers to do?
And ESPs, and food service workers, and all the people in our building. I mean, that's just one tiny idea, but these people are so beloved. They know our children, they know our communities, and so that is just one way that they could be reaching out to families, having those conversations, and hopefully getting more people to choose MPS.
Uh, Laura, I'm gonna give you a chance on this, uh, this, uh, again, kind of last piece of enrollment, trying to draw more people in some of these specific strategies.
I, I mean, I won't make anyone feel bad for making a choice that they think is best for their kids. I mean, no one should feel like a martyr to, by sending their kids to public schools. If families are leaving because we're not meeting our kids' needs, then that's on us as a district to figure out. And this whole question of choice, I mean, half of those 42% of kids not enrolling in MPS are going to open enroll in other districts and going to private schools. I hear my opponent talk a lot about charter schools, and there's the whole article that demonstrates that we are not holding them accountable to the outcomes for students, but we're not talking about the families that are leaving for private schools and for opening, taking advantage of the resources that they have at their disposal. So I don't, I don't feel great about saying which parents' choices are valid and what aren't. We just need to address as a district, the fact that we aren't meeting kids' needs and families are leaving because of it. We have to have better ways to make sure that we are engaging with those families and listening to them as we're making these big decisions around our budget.
And just to get, and I got a, a pretty straightforward answer, Greta, on this, like, would you support potentially paying teachers, uh, more to go and be advocates in our special school program, things like that, and get people, uh, to the schools?
Yeah, I mean, I think everything should be on the table. I, I, I absolutely think if we have, um, willing community members willing to put in the work and the time, then we as a district need to find ways to partner with them. Um, I have some other ideas about outreach. Uh, I think that the board could do a lot better job of being out in the community. I know from my work at the Department of Human Services that when we're trying to make programs, policies, and practices that really meet the needs of communities, we have to start in the community. We have to listen to the community first and build systems from there. Um, and we also need to be out in the community proactively. I have committed to show up, just as I have through the course of these nine months, um, to be at community festivals, be at site council and PTA meetings, be at neighborhood meetings. As your District Six Board Director, I need to be accessible so that families feel heard when they have a concern, and I, I, I promise to do that. I'll put in the time, um, and I'll try to make everything that we do very transparent and be very honest. Um, and I think that that's something that we as a board can address.
I think this, uh, Red, and I'm gonna keep going with it because, yeah, yeah, bringing more people into, uh, the, the decision-making process, uh, the community into something both that you have talked about, like, in, in your campaigns. Uh, and so again, I'm kind of looking for, uh, what, what are specific on a policy, and what I think I, which is a reason that has been brought up, is that there is a lot of information that we frankly don't always get, uh, out of our, uh, board or out of our school district about budget gaps, about, uh, most recent enrollment numbers. We keep them, it's a long time. So, my question is, what specifically could we expect would be different if you were on the board in terms of that transparency? What could we come back to two years from now and say, "We weren't getting this before, and now we are"? Thank you, hopefully, uh, whether we like it or not. Um, and Greta, I'll start with you.
Well, this is one of my superpowers. I walked into a union that, people didn't wear blue, that's our color for the record. Now, we are literally one of the strongest units in the country, and that is from co-creation. That is from communication, which can be so lacking in the Minneapolis Public Schools. Straightforward information, and one of the ways I helped us get there was not just through weekly newsletters, but through video, through a podcast I created, through social media. It is critical to meet families where they're at and not need them to come to you. I think a lot of us share the same frustration, hiding to go to school board meetings to be heard. Um, we do, I actually really appreciate a lot of our school board members who are out in the community. I do see you, I appreciate you. And I want to bring my superpower of communicating in all different ways and forms to this level of school board because that's what District Six deserves.
I appreciate that. I mean, I, I love a good superpower. And I'm, like, specifically, are there things like that we can say, like, uh, that we could look to, again, in a couple of years and be like, "We weren't getting it before and now we are"? That would be different if you were on the board.
Yeah, literally the things I just named. A newsletter, video, social media, and whatever other ways you want to be talked to. I love being in the community. I love having open office hours and coffee hours and talking to you all and having thousands of one-on-one conversations. That is the path to true co-creation and to making us all not just feel more informed, but empower you as citizens of Minneapolis to be more engaged and take on more leadership roles in this district.
Laura, same question to you. What would be different in terms of the transparency if you were on the board?
My campaign has been about bringing more people into the conversation about what's happening from our schools since the very beginning, and especially listening to the voices that aren't being heard. Um, concretely, an example is live streaming and recording our finance committee meetings. It is, it is outrageous to me that the only way to access those financial updates is going in person, which I have done for the last year. Um, another concrete example is my first board meeting that I ever attended was actually as a high school student at the Washburn Auditorium, when I think the board was taking their meetings on the road. Let's go to the different parts of the city where families are gathering, where childcare and food are offered, right? These are how we listen to the voices that we are not yet hearing from. Um, and I just, I think so much about my experience as an early childhood educator and that if we, if I were to meet a family at the door and say, "Just trust me, I'm the expert," that's not going to work because we need collaboration and we need communication to be successful, to meet the needs of that child.
I think, uh, thank you both for that. I mean, and just to add to the two examples I brought up, like, if you were on the board, could we expect, like, the citizens, uh, the people whose children are at the schools, like, to get things like enrollment numbers, budget numbers, in a more timely, planned way than we are getting them now? Is that something that you would commit to? I'll start, Laura.
I think the more information we can provide to our community, the better. And I think that there are ways to do this that make it really easily to, easily accessible for families because, as you mentioned, for example, finances are complex. We need to think about how we're talking about this with families, and so, let's say, during a budget cycle, we have options, right? I'm, I'm taking this education, um, finance certificate through Georgetown, and they have a plethora of examples of community engagement tools. Like, "We have to cut 4% from the budget. Here, here's some examples of what would add up to that community. Give us your input." I actually talked to a former MPS employee that said, back in her time, they actually did send out a survey to families as sort of a forced choice comparison. That's a great way to just engage the community in demonstrating how complex and how difficult these decisions are.
So, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Red, same question. Would we get these numbers, things like enrollment, budget numbers, in a more timely, regular, consistent way in our?
I just want to start off by saying it's not our board members withholding this information. I don't even know if anyone is withholding it. I, I think this is a communication issue. And these numbers aren't getting to board members in timely fashion, it's not getting to us in a timely fashion. And to address letting families choose what to cut, we have done that. Uh, and we, every single year, when they say, "We have $100,000 less in the building, who do you want to cut?", um, it's incredibly dangerous, uh, for the classrooms in the building, for that community, and for the positions, because, believe it or not, guess what people do? Fight for themselves. Fight for themselves. That is just the reality and the nature of when you're putting it at a hyper-local level of what to cut and surveying people. So I would actually err that we kind of stay away from that kind of stuff.
So no?
Would we get this in more timely fashion? The answer is yes, I hope so, but that means I have to have that information as well. I don't, I, we have two board members in this room. I am positive they are not withholding this information from us. What we need to do, whether it's Laura or myself, is push the people between us and them to get us all that information faster. And that's easily something that we can both do.
So yes? Okay, we got you, Laura, good, okay. Okay, this is a fun one. And since you brought up there's two board members in the room, like, this question that we got about collaboration and about how we are involving people, both from, which we talked a lot about, families and folks in the district, but also like on the board, of how you work with colleagues. So one of the questions we got was, if you can talk about a time that you had to work with people that have very different points of view than you, and you could aid to come to some sort of like a positive place, if this person says, how have you been able to work with people who disagree with you to a positive outcome that you felt good about? And Laura, I'll start with you.
Yes. So as a teacher, you are in constant collaboration with your assistants and with your team and with parents. And so again, I can't just meet a family at the door and say, just trust me, I'm the expert. I have to engage in building a relationship with those families. And what we have in Minneapolis is a very diverse district, whether that's cultures, home languages, socioeconomic classes. Our diversity is our greatest strength and it also presents one of our trickiest issues, right? How are we going to engage all of our diverse stakeholder voices? I believe that we need to do a better job listening and doing that intentional outreach. And I also think that, you mentioned collaborating with the school board members. We need to have a very clear understanding of our role as a governance body. We are nine heads on one body. Once we pass a policy or make a budget decision, we have to speak as one. It is critical to showing that we are effective as a board and it's also honoring the unique experience and voices that each of our board directors brings and therefore the voices of their constituents. So it's critical that we work together as a board to build consensus. I always say, we're not always going to agree, but how we treat each other and how we have those conversations matter.
Thank you very much. Brett, a same question about, you have an example from the past about times that you've worked with people who you strongly disagree with and were able to come to a positive outcome.
Yeah, as a union president, you can believe there are a lot of disagreements I've had over the years. And most recently, and the one I'm most proud of, is working with our board, our new superintendent, and the head of HR to secure the best contract that our teachers have seen in over thirty years, which has only led to more retention, a more stabilization for your students. And that did take a lot of hard lessons along the way. That did take meeting people where we're at. That did take me as a lead negotiator coming in and understanding the budget parameters. And I'm so proud that we were able to secure that while staying within budget parameters for the better of all of Minneapolis. As an effective leader, I am excited to bring experiences like that to the school board level.
Thank you both, that was great talk. I appreciate all this energy very much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to another gigantic pot of issues. And then I know we've got a bunch more questions from the audience. But we did get, we got a series of questions, both before the event and then even like as people are sitting their way on student achievement. And I would just say, like, I moderated my first ever campaign forum, I think, twelve years ago. And the discussion was strongly around student achievement. And I think that a lot of people would say that they don't feel like the numbers have necessarily moved in the way that they would have liked in those twelve years. And so this person specifically wants this asking, student assessment data showed decreasing reading and math proficiency pretty much across the board with increasing gap between racial and ethnic groups. So how would you improve student outcomes and help to start and close these achievement gaps? And I'll say, and how is it different than what we've been trying for the last decade? Brett, how would you be the first shot?
First of all, the number one indicating factor of how a child will perform on these racist, biased standardized tests is household income. We haven't started this from the rooftops as educators for a long time. I know that our students are brilliant. I think of the baggage that is invisible that they come in with. I think of my student who was gone for a week. She was gone for a week because she was brutally abused. And when she came back, I was the only person on earth who knew that the next day was her birthday. She was in a foster home and I ran up and hugged her and I said, honey, it's your birthday tomorrow, what do you want? She didn't say, I want to be back with my mom, I don't want to be, or I want to be at home. She said, I want a Dora doll, Miss Callahan. And I went home and I got her back and she screamed with joy because she's five years old. And our five-year-olds are dealing with problems that none of us can ever imagine. And it is critical that we are looking at the whole child before we are saying, you're not achieving, what are we going to do? We have to meet them where, where they are at. And that is what I did as a teacher and I will do as a school board member.
So when you say that the tests are racist, is that then, should we not look at those results though?
Absolutely not. We do enough progress and monitoring as teachers. Those tests are a multi-billion dollar industry leading to the dismantling and defunding of our public schools. And I encourage every single parent to opt out of them.
So if, and so with that then, just to put a really fine point on this, what would, is there anything, I mean, because you talked very eloquently about personal experience. Are there, is there anything on a district level in terms of policy that should be done differently in this vein? Or are you saying that there is not a problem to solve?
I just described the problem.
Well, that's, what is it then on a district level we should do?
We need to meet our children where they're at. So when they're coming in with mountains of baggage, and as a teacher, my principal on my first day of teaching at ECU and came in the room and said, why are your kids painting? That is not part of their learning target. That is a problem. We have moved away from letting our children play and grow and learn and nap and be kindergartners. That is not developmentally appropriate. It is leading to the further decline in opportunities for our kids, what they are learning. And there is no quick fix to this. We are talking about societies and equity and government's failures, but at the building level, I know that I can't be the teacher outside going, where's your backpack, where's your pencil? Because I know what they're walking in with every single day. And maybe the needs of every single human is complex. It is not an easy solution, but I have dealt with those complexities and I can bring that knowledge to the level where we need it.
And so what, talk to me about bringing that knowledge to the district level? Like, what, what are the levers that you have in the district? Like, a member of the school board to address that?
Yeah, so when we're obsessing over student achievement, do you know that, so there is a strategic plan in this district right now that was not co-created with any of us, any teachers, any parents? And their number one goal is student achievement and their number two is student well-being. And I know that at a basic level, at a school board level, we have to flip those two if we want to see anyone achieving anything. I know that we do need individualized attention. I know that we need the federal government who promised in nineteen seventy-five to give us forty percent of the dollars for our Title I students. That means you have, you have free and reduced lunch. That needs to be fully funded. And we know that our schools can't be a catchall for all of the problems that our students are bringing in, but we do know we can help them learn to love school, start to thrive, start to learn and to catch up. And quite frankly, having the same standards for students living in poverty, saying, why aren't you meeting these same test scores as students who have had a stable home and two parents and someone who can read to them at night, does not make sense. And as educators, we're already doing progress monitoring. We are making sure that our students are growing and learning. It's not like this stuff isn't happening, but the way we are weaponizing it across the country is leading to the dismantling of public schools.
Laura, we spent a lot of time with Brett, so I'm gonna go to you on this question of, what, as a member of the school board, if you would point you would want to, to, if you would want to do something to address these achievement numbers, gap potentially, and how it might be different than what we've seen?
So I know as a Montessori-trained educator that when we design learning environments with children in mind, that they can be transformative. And I firmly believe that when we center children on the margins and design systems that meet their needs, we will have a strong system that meets the needs of every child. So I'm gonna say again, we need to implement an evidence-based literacy curriculum. I am not okay saying that because kids are poor, we can't teach them how to read. If we have kids that are there ninety-eight percent of the time and their test scores are still different, those progress monitoring is still different than their white peers, then that's a problem. My second graders teacher last, like, fall at conferences said that it was the first time in all of her years in the district that they had a phonics curriculum. And that's because the district was using supplemental phonics curriculums at the time. And she said, it's amazing how fast our kids are catching on. This is absolutely something that the board can address and that we need to make sure we implement with fidelity.
How do you, Brett, with what Brett is off with though, which is the suggestion that these tests are inherently racist and they are actually contributing to the problems that we are trying to fix?
Yeah, so tests are definitely an imperfect measure of how well we're serving our children. But even our progress monitoring, even the FAS tests that we use in elementary school are still showing these disparities, right? So again, we need to have an evidence-based literacy curriculum and we need to have teachers that are supported so that they can implement that. I also think that, just to go back to what the board can do, I'm a big advocate for investing in expanding our early childhood. Research continues to show how important that strong foundation is for lifelong learning and lifetime outcomes. And MPS has a, has an opportunity here to lead in this. I know from my work at the state that there is a ton of exciting opportunities in terms of funding, in terms of diversifying our workforce, and in terms of closing the gap in those generational cycles of poverty if we invest in early childhood.
This, I mean, this is a really important topic. So Brett, I'm gonna come back to you. If you have anything with or anything that you want to respond to?
First of all, you're never gonna get your
Oh, did you let, I didn't know, just if you could get real close to the microphone, sorry, yes. Or you just, you just sit forward.
I keep spaw, I keep spawing, okay, there?
Yeah, okay.
You're never gonna hear me say the words, our kids can't read because they can and it takes time. And I know that, first of all, the standards we have are literally made up. When I started teaching in two thousand eleven, by the end of the school year, my kindergarteners had to read at a level C. And for anybody who doesn't know, we just have like A, B, C, D, E for remotes. And it goes up. In two thousand twenty, my students had to be at a level E by the end of kindergarten. Why? I don't know, it is literally made up. And so if we want our children to read, I am so glad, Ashley, that we're talking about the science of anything. Science of reading, yay. Curriculum, yay. I was one of those teachers who was told, just supplements when I started teaching. That is not okay. And I know that there is a billion-dollar industry profiting on saying, our kids can't read. And it is literally distracting all of us from the problems we're facing. There was a ton of money from the legislature coming in for renewed curriculum, really glad, but that was seventy-five million dollars that could have been put towards smaller class sizes. And again, because of my lived experience and knowledge of what's happening in our schools, I am so excited to bring that to the board level.
All right, Laura, I'm gonna give you one last word on this, like this, those are like, these standards are made up, like, can you respond to that?
I, I know how hard the people at our Department of Education work to create those standards. I think that we need some way to measure how we are meeting the needs of students. They may be imperfect and constantly evolving, but they need to be based on making sure our education is actually setting our students up to be successful once they walk out of our doors and become citizens in our communities. And I think as with anything, I'm a big proponent of accountability. If we are doing something that is not working, we need to be looking at that policy. We need to be looking at that budget decision and say, why isn't this working? And if it's not, make a change. I think constantly being able to evolve and adapt is critical in the field of education and making sure that, again, that we're listening to as many diverse voices as possible.
Okay, thank you both for that. There was, there was an important conversation and I'm glad that we got into some really niche. So I have a question here in the audience. This person asked, the constant re-drawing of boundaries, and in particular, a big chunk of Southwest to North, or I think we talked a little bit about, has caused an exit of some families. So how do you feel about boundary changes? And do you support? And Brett, I'll start with you.
Yeah, I've been pretty public about that. I'm not against redrawing some of those lines if that's what will bring our students back. It doesn't make sense, some of these changes that were made. It's, kids are on buses for an hour at a time going to a school where the principal said, no, thanks, we don't want you. We should look at what is accessible, what makes sense, what's going to keep people instead of gaslighting our families that they're racist if they don't choose this, this new route and pathway for their kids. And not only did the CDD do that, but it took away most of our K eights. It took away the ability for Armitage to be a Montessori school or Wyndham to be a Spanish immersion school. These are things families want. We need to look at everything we can possibly do to help our students who are not choosing Minneapolis Public Schools choose it again or, or at all as families are even having new children and growing up here. And again, we should have been listening to all of us on the ground floor in two thousand saying what we wanted because we all described these things instead of gaslighting and silencing us and having fake listening sessions. And as a school board member who's already, or, as a person who's already been through this, as a school board member, I can bring that experience.
I want to say a question to you on, do you support the re-drawing of the
So one of the things that the CDD was trying to do to address equity and integration was centralize our magnet programs. As I mentioned, Armitage was a Montessori school when we moved into the district ten years ago, or into the neighborhood ten years ago. And we still chose Armitage as our community school because that was what our value was. I don't think the CDD was successful in supporting those centralized magnet programs to be successful, to let parents know that there were other options. And it's interesting that Brett talks about, you know, putting your kid on a bus for an hour because prior to the CDD, we were putting kids on a bus for an hour and bringing them from the north side down to our south and southwest side magnets. So I think re-drawing boundaries is always going to be a tricky conversation, but as with everything, if we bring the community into the conversation, they will, they will have more buy-in, right? The biggest complaint I've heard from the CDD was the lack of communication and the lack of transparency from the district in what the plan was.
I don't know, it seems like there's a lot of make it green in here, but I don't know, Brett, do you want to?
Yeah, yeah, so you were putting your kids on a bus to go to Armitage because that was a choice, that was a magnet school. And now people are doing the same thing. They're sending their kids on a bus to go to a magnet school. And when I talk about re-drawing lines, I'm talking about people in southwest Minneapolis being put on a bus for an hour to go to schools on the other side of the highway. That doesn't make sense for a lot of people. And so they did what they could, which is take your children out of the district. And one way that we can kind of solve this problem of like, hey, I want a Spanish immersion school over here, is having full-service community schools. That means that the educators, the students, the families, the community get to work together to make that school the hub of the community and be what are the needs of that community, whether it's Bethune Arts, whether it's Green Dual Immersion. We can make that happen here and now, and there's no, nothing standing in the way of that happening. And I hope that effort And I helped that effort move forward years ago. Since then, they, we had a partnership with the city to make it happen. We surveyed families, we co-created. And since then, that has stopped. Not only do we need to be able to do that wherever we want in the Minneapolis Public Schools because it is the answer to charters, but we then need to extend that into middle and high schools.
So that, are you okay to move on, Brett?
I mean, Bretta mentioned full-service community schools and she's mentioned this and, you know, throughout the course of this campaign. Full-service community schools in theory are a great idea. But like anything, they weren't, they weren't implemented successfully. We didn't see the impact that we wanted to. And so whatever the decision is, whether it's a policy or a budget decision, we have to have measures of accountability to make sure that it's having the intended impact on our community. Because otherwise, that's not an investment in our kids that is actually making a difference.
Okay, we have a question here about a referendum that we are about, which might be the, if the budget or if it's a piece for tech support dollars to help the school. This person asks, taxpayer property tax levy, he's already slated to be a pretty large burden on property owners. Why should voters vote to increase their taxes even more? Which is presuming, I suppose, that voters do support that referendum, which maybe don't. Any chance for, Bretta, let's start with you.
About a year ago, the district called me and said, oh, yay. We're going to put out another referendum for $20 million for technology. And I probably, like many people in Minneapolis, said, and are you going to spend that money appropriately? I have a really hard time getting behind this, knowing what I know right now about how, how some of the funding that we've gotten has been spent. For example, we had a referendum years ago around class size caps. Guess what? And we didn't get those lower class sizes. Now, I am fully on board with this referendum after doing my research, after talking to people involved. And that's because this isn't a shiny new object. This is closing a gap that we already have. I've watched our district get new Promethean boards after new Promethean boards. And that's not what this referendum is about. It's going to close a gap that we already have money. We're siphoning out of our general fund. And that is what's best for our students right now. Now, do I think you all and us as taxpayers should have to carry that burden? No, I think the state and, and the country should. And the corporations should, quite frankly, here. But unfortunately, this is the waters we're swimming in right now. And this is a choice to close a funding gap in the Minneapolis Public Schools. And I am here for it and I am proudly voting yes.
All right, Laura, same question to you.
So vote yes. I think this moment in Minneapolis Public Schools, and I think why you all are here tonight is because you want to see our schools survive and thrive. This is critical to the board's strategy to address upcoming budget deficits. If we don't get this $20 million, then we are in real trouble. Now, I understand why people are suspicious of this. I was a kid in the 90s in MPS and I remember those vote yes for kid leaf bags and all of the community talking about the referendum to keep class sizes low. There's reasonable skepticism about how our board has used these taxpayer dollars. We have to be better stewards of that money and demonstrate that we are making wise budget decisions with it and that we're actually moving the needle on student outcomes. I will also just note that the district has mentioned that this is a part of a multifaceted approach. You know, Bretta talked about the problem lies at the state and federal government. I absolutely agree with that. It is also part of the board's strategy to organize and advocate at the state. Imagine how powerful it could be if we had all of the leaders in this district, from the union to the board, to the administration and other districts across the metro area, advocating to our legislature and asking them to give us that $20 million instead of putting the burden solely on the taxpayers of MPS.
Thank you both for that. So, so yes and yes, and yes, doing the referendum, you vote for, thanks you both very much. I really like this question. This is a very interesting question. What school districts do you think are doing really well? And what do you think we could learn from that? I think, I kind of like, I know it started with you, Laura.
I don't think that it's reasonable to expect anyone to be getting this perfect, right? Like each district has a unique makeup of students and educators and families. And so when we are looking for examples of other districts doing some things well, I am thinking about schools from all over the country. I just had the chance to spend a few days with educators and district leaders from all over as part of my ed finance workshop. And, you know, there are some really innovative things that districts all over the country are doing. But we really need to make sure that we're tailoring our unique problems in MPS or the solutions to our problems to what is going on in Minneapolis. And that includes declining enrollment, that includes underfunding from the state, that includes, you know, not having a literacy curriculum. So I think you can pick any issue and there are some districts that are doing it better, whether it's the reading curriculum or investing in early childhood. But I can't think of a specific district. But I know that there are examples that we could pick and choose and talk to those district leaders to learn from.
Bretta, there is district and maybe people do, do a particular value sometimes for-
Well, I know a lot of teachers and families who have left this district for surrounding districts. We do, as Maya Tonga mentioned, have these like wildly loose open enrollment laws that like no other state in the country has. And so we have tons of our kids on the south side going to Edina, going to Bloomington, going to St. Louis Park, on the north side, they're going to Robbinsdale. And again, we've created a more segregated system with open enrollments. And now, what am I hearing from families? Oh, well, at Edina, we have, we know the teachers. I know who I'm going to have in fifth grade. I know who I'm going to have in seventh grade. I know, Laura, from growing up here, we have that. How many of you have seen a change in principal in the last couple of years? How many of you have seen a change in your, in your child's teacher, right? Like, there has been a lot of churn and some of that stability matters. I talked to teachers who went to Bloomington and they just talk about how smooth and tight and consistent the systems are. And Minneapolis Public Schools, the left is not talking to the right. We need more of that stability and consistency. And again, why are some of these districts doing so well besides having more wealth? Because they're taking all of our kids. And why are we struggling? Because we don't have funds we used to.
Thank you both for that. I have one last question and then we're going to give each of our candidates a chance to give a closing statement. But I, so one of you will be elected this fall and then will take office next year. And my question is, flash forward three years, four years, and we're back here potentially like in another pandemic or- what is it that we could look to you and actually say, you said you would have done X. We can judge you by Z. And now we are looking to hold you accountable for that. What in your term can we most specifically say, this is what you are promising and we have the receipts and we can come back a few years later and say, did it happen? Did it work? And how nice of giving you the option to set that up for yourself. So what is the, what is the thing that we can most look to for you that, that would be different if you are in this office in four years from now? And I think I should have been going back, I thought that would be good.
You know, I cannot wait to bring all of my experience as a teacher, as a leader in governance to this level, but also with my vast knowledge of the forces at bay trying to dismantle our public schools right now. The public does not know, and it is no one's fault, how all of these nice-sounding ed reform groups are destroying and siphoning money from our public school system. I want to be the person that helps to educate and lead the revolution. I want them to invest fully in our public schools, choose public schools and fight that fight. I want to save the Minneapolis Public Schools out of fighting it in four years. But I cannot wait to just start us all thinking in that direction, like what is possible? Because we can do it.
Laura, same question to you. Four years from now, what can we come back and say? You are elected and now we're looking to you for what?
I want to be a really good board director by listening to diverse stakeholder voices. So it's really critical that at the end of four years, we will feel like MPS is doing business differently. I don't want just my vision for Minneapolis Public Schools. I want our vision moving us forward. And that means I need to be able to work well with my fellow board directors. That means I need to be out listening to the diverse stakeholder voices in the community. But one thing I do know for sure is in four years, we better have an evidence-based literacy curriculum and see our kids reading at improved rates. It is unacceptable. Literacy is liberation and we are denying children their freedom when we are graduating them and moving them grade after grade without the skills they need to be successful later in school or later in life. So I hope after four years, we have that in place. We have the results showing that it works and that we have families feeling like MPS is a place that they're really, really proud and excited to send their kids.
Okay, thank you both very much. As promised, we're going to give both candidates 90 seconds to do a closing statement. I believe I gave Laura the first opening statement. And so Bretta, I'm going to let you have the first opening statement.
Okay, well, tonight, you got to hear and experience two people who care deeply about the Minneapolis Public Schools and who share a different viewpoint on how to get there, who have different lived experiences in our schools, different knowledge, different qualifications. And I think back to when I was a newer teacher at Ethune. There was an article released called, "The Worst Teachers Teach in the Poorest Schools." It named my school. I wrote a response as just like an angry new teacher. And it was called, "Walk a Mile in My Teaching Shoes." It was published in the Star Tribune and one of the most read outlets that year. I painted a picture of reality for the public. I painted a picture of poverty in education. I painted a very clear picture of how they're measuring kids and how they're measuring teachers. And from that experience, I knew that I couldn't keep going to the school board or to our legislators. They had to come to us. So I started a reading program called, "Read To Our Children." And it brought everyone from Pete Ellison to Lieutenant Governor Pete Flanagan and our future Vice President, Tim Walz. And they got to see firsthand the joy of our children, the potential and the baggage that they carry. And I think back to why I did this. And it's because I am relentless. I am relentless in this fight. Paul Lovestown said, sometimes you have to pit a fight in order to win one. And I am choosing this fight for strong public schools. I ask that you join me. I ask for your vote. I ask that you show your support with a long sign. And I am so grateful that you are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Laura, I'm going to give you 90 seconds for your closing statement.
As a parent in this district for the last four years, I've often asked myself, what about the kids? As an alum of this district, I've asked myself, what can I do to make sure that every child has the great experience in this district like I did? And as an educator, I've asked myself, is this the best we can do? I don't think so. I don't believe we can expect perfection from our leaders, but we can expect honesty, transparency, and accountability. I have no other agenda than doing right by our kids. And I feel called to this moment because this district needs healers and bridge builders. I know how to build trust and relationships. I've been doing it for nine months. I will show up, I will listen even when, and especially when we don't agree. And I will follow through. I will be a leader that puts in the time, is thoughtful, and is consistently communicating with the community. And that's because I'm a leader that is seeking understanding and shared values. I'm a leader that believes that our strength lies in our diversity. So tonight, let's revisit my questions I asked in the beginning. I hope you walk away feeling like I'm the leader that listens and I'm the leader that you trust and that inspires you to get involved so that this district meets this moment for our kids. And of course, I hope I've earned your vote. Thank you so much.
And then I want to say one last time, thank you to all of you for coming. But I really want to say, public service needs to be connected that it is service. And whoever wins this election, I, I am personally grateful and I hope will join me in extending our gratitude to two very caring, committed people are stepping up and is technically deserve in this world. So please join me in one big round of applause. Again, thank you all so much for being here. Thank you so much for our neighborhood partners for helping me with possible. Both, I believe, are candidates will be over here. At least importantly, there's also snacks. So there's brownies and cookies. There's information about being involved in the neighborhood organization. Thank you all so much for coming out tonight. My name is Sam Nanger. I hope you all have a great rest of your evening. And don't forget, I'm sure people here won't, to vote. And tell everyone that you know to vote as well. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very good, very good.
Thanks, Tim.
Sorry about that.